Good afternoon, everyone. Sorry, I was having a little bit of difficulty getting on, so, but I'm on now. Welcome to the meeting of the Committee on Economic and Community Development. In attendance today, we have Councilwoman Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, and I also represent the 6th District and Chair of this committee. And we have, do we have, is Robert Stokes on?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And that's Robert Stokes, a member of the Committee of the 12th District. John Bullock, a member of the Committee in 9th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ryan Dorsey, a member of the Committee in 3rd District.
Thank you.
Councilman Mark Conway, a member of the Committee, 4th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Antonio Glover, a member of the Committee in 13th District. And Councilwoman Odette Ramos, a member of the Committee in 14th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we also have Councilman Costello, which is a member of one of the bills, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I'm looking to see if Councilwoman Porter is on us, because she's also one of the sponsors. I don't see her yet. Also, members of the Office of the President, Nikki Thompson. And also, a member from the Office of the President, Lucy Font. And also, thank you. And just checking to see if there's anyone else from the President's office, and I see Erin DeGraff in red.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. And representing the Mayor's Office. Do I see, do we have Nina Themulus or Natasha, or either one of them?
Yes, Nina Themulus here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Hi, Nina. Okay, this afternoon, we're going to hear two bills. The first bill is 21-0026, and it's rezoning 1201 South Caton Avenue for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 1201 South Caton Avenue, Block 2108C, Lot 002, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat from the EC-1 zoning district to the I-1 zoning district, and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on January 25, 2021, and this bill was sponsored by Councilmember Porter. And I don't see Councilwoman Porter on at this time, so we'll go ahead and move to agency reports. The Committee will now hear from agency representatives, and we'll start with the Planning Commission. And they did give a favorable report. And is Eric Tiso on?
Yes, Madam Chair, we're here.
Hi, Eric, how are you? Also, as you explained, could you please just make sure you explain the Department of Planning's findings?
Madam Chair, point of information, the schedule says that this is on at 2:15. I wonder if Councilwoman Porter's going to come on at 2:15? Yeah, the calendar on Legistar says 12:15. That's why I was just wondering. I haven't texted her, but...
I'm having council staff just recheck. Okay, you, thank you for bringing that up, Councilwoman Ramos. What we're going to do is just go to the other bill.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
And that will also, thank you. So we're going to go back and do City Council Bill 21-0027, and that is the RPP Area 9, Federal Hill, and the exemption for 1 East Montgomery Street. And this bill was also introduced on January 25, 2021, for the purpose of amending the parking management plan for RPP Area 9 to add an exception to the plan's general permit allotments for dwelling units. And Councilmember Costello, you are the sponsor. Do you have any words before we move on to the agency reports?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This ordinance amends the parking management plan, which is required by Article 31, Section 10 of City Code. Parking Authority can correct me if I get that wrong. Each RPP area in the city has what's known as a parking management plan. It outlines a couple things, but three things mainly are the streets that are signed that are eligible to participate in the residential permit parking program. It includes the hours and days in which there's exceptions, and it includes special circumstances, things like passes that may exist within that area for a church or a business. In this case, this is probably the fourth or fifth ordinance that I've done to amend the Area 9 RPP plan. This is based on a compromise with the developer. In this case, a former bed and breakfast property is being redeveloped into multifamily along with some retail on the ground floor, if I'm not mistaken. But essentially, this is the agreement that was in place in order to get community association support at the zoning board. So that's the short of it. And I respectfully ask for my colleague's support, and want to thank Madam Chair for bringing this matter to here. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So we'll go on and move to the agency reports, and we'll start with the City Solicitor's Office.
Madam Chair, the Law Department stands by its report approved for Forman legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Any questions to the Law Department? Okay, and I do want to recognize Nikki Thompson from the Office of the President as well. She had also some computer glitches.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Then we'll hear from the Department of Planning.
Planning has no objection and defers to parking authority as more directly impacted.
Thank you, Eric Tiso. Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Baltimore City DOT stands by our bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you. The Baltimore Police Department, their representative from the Police Department.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Shannon Conway, Legislative Coordinator for BPD. We stand by our bill report, and we have no objection.
Thank you, Shannon. Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. We stand by our bill report, which is in deference to the parking authority.
Okay. And the parking authority. Which I think is Brent?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Councilmembers, Brett Thorne with the Parking Authority. We do not oppose the bill.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the Committee thus far to any of the agencies on this bill, or the councilmember that's sponsored? Now, we're checking to see if there is any public testimony on this bill.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you. I guess this could be to the sponsor. I appreciate you bringing this forward to us, Councilman. Just from my knowledge, my understanding of most of the parking areas in my district is that they're assigned to just the homeowners. So this particular bill and sort of the steps that it's here, as well as the part that you're adding, is just assigning permission for some of these parking permits to be used in these, into the apartments. Is that correct?
Thanks for your question, Councilwoman. Not exactly. I have 14 of the 50 RPP areas citywide in the 11th District. My understanding is that it is not strictly supportive of homeowners, but basically single-family dwelling units or apartments within what would be like a singular row home, up to four dwelling units. In this case, the developer is going to be taking an Airbnb that previously had seven rooms in it for rent. It's going to be converting that to two retail pieces, as well as four dwelling units. Under the law, technically, they could get four parking passes for each of those dwelling units, along with one visitor's pass for each of those dwelling units. So this puts limitations in place. So you'll, I'm sure you'll see more of these ordinances from me in the future, specifically with respect to Area 9, Councilwoman. And essentially, what we're doing is basically limiting the amount of parking that they can have in return for increasing the number of dwellings that exist in the neighborhood, so as to not create a burden on parking in the neighborhood.
So, and then also, in the bill's synopsis, the background section, the last paragraph just kind of explains exactly what council, with the sponsor of the bill, just really explained. It is in writing on that bill's synopsis in the back of the first page. Any other questions? Did he answer your question, Councilwoman?
Yes. I am, you know, again, this is, I understand that the, you know, when there's a home with, you know, renters in it, obviously, it also applies. So, but I understand what's happening now, and I appreciate it, and I'll also read through the synopsis. The synopsis isn't on Legistar, so I guess it's just the synopsis that came in the email.
Any other questions from any other councilmembers on this particular bill?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Yes, Councilman Stokes, yes, you have the floor.
I just have a question. I'm actually sitting on the Parking Authority Board, and I was wanting to bekey myself from voting on this. I don't know, I didn't check, I just thought about it.
No, this does not interfere with you personally, so I would say. I was also a member of the Parking Authority Board for seven years, so things like this come through, it doesn't affect, it's not affecting you that, the way that you would think. And if some, if someone from the Law Department wants to add to that, they can. And no comment at this time? Okay. Is there any public testimony? On this bill?
Mr. Vick.
Okay, what I'd like to do, could you raise, raise your hand if you have, if there's anyone that has testimony for this bill, number 21-0027, on the Federal Hill exemption for 1 East Montgomery Street? Raise your hand if you want to testify on this particular bill. That will make it easier for us. And at this time, I don't see any hands raised. So on that note, I'll take it as there's no public testimony for this. I can't hear you.
Hello, would you like to testify? On this bill?
No, okay. Okay, we're now going to, is there a motion to move this bill?
Salute.
Who, who, who's, I made the motion?
I believe it's Dorsey.
Councilman Dorsey, did you make the motion to move?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Second by Conway. And we have no amendments, so Chair Middleton is a yes. Councilman Bullock?
F.
Is a yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Conway?
Hi.
Councilman Glover? Is absent. Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes? All right, thank you. This bill will move to, at the next, when we have the next council meeting. So now, we're going to go back to City Council Bill 21-0026. And I'm just checking to see if the sponsor of the bill is here and is not. Again, I'll just read this again. This is the rezoning for 12-01 South Caton Avenue for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 1201 South Caton Avenue, Block 2108C, Lot 002, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat from the EC-1 zoning district to the I-1 zoning district, and providing for a special effective date. The bill was introduced on January 25, 2021, and the bill was sponsored by Councilmember Porter. And we're going to go ahead and go back to Mr. Eric Tiso from the Planning Department. And Eric, could you give a pretty good explanation and go over this, since we don't have the sponsor? And please include the findings in your report as well.
Sure, I'd be happy to. And good afternoon again, Madam Chair, and members of the Committee. This bill was brought to the Planning Commission of their public meeting on February 25th. So it'll rezone the existing EC-1 educational campus zoning district to I-1 light industrial. And it's not all that often that we see something going to industrial zoning, so this is somewhat significant. And I know that the attorney for the applicant is with us in the attendees, and she may have more to add following this. But this is the property that was currently zoned EC-1 because of Seton Kew High School Campus, but that school has closed. And that's a significant feature, because the school closed in June of 2017. On June 5 of 2017, our brand-new zoning code was adopted, which created the Educational Campus zoning district to begin with. So unfortunately, this is a bit of a ship's passing in the timeline. In the intervening years, there hasn't been a whole lot of demand for use of this property for school-type use, and so the Roman Catholic Archbishop is looking at divesting of this property, and it will be redeveloped, or they have an applicant who is interested in redeveloping it for a warehouse distribution facility, which requires the I-1 light industrial zoning. So for the standards for rezoning, there's a number of them, and I can walk you through that, and this is more in-depth than our staff report, if I'm going a little too fast. But basically, this will support the needs of the city's comprehensive plan of retaining and attracting businesses in all growth sectors. As I mentioned, it's uncommon that we see property going to industrial zoning. Normally, we see our industrial, large areas furthering away, especially with intrusion from commercial and residential uses. This will be important for the needs of the city, since it'll provide new light industrial opportunities that will replace that lost inventory, and especially since this is immediately adjacent to the I-95 corridor, right off of the Clover Leap. It is strategically placed to take advantage of that. As for the needs of the particular neighborhood, there's no current demand for schools or additional educational-type programs in the area, and so this seems to be reasonable with those findings. There hasn't been a real significant change in population in the immediate area that would affect this proposal in any way, but it would support the increase of industrially-zoned land, which is, again, this particular property is in an advantageous spot to take advantage of that. There's added city utilities, which were sufficient for redevelopment in the area. It's part of the city's street network and should not be negatively impacted with the transportation patterns or traffic patterns in the area. South Caton Avenue is listed by DOT as a through truck route, so it's appropriate for that increase of intensity and use. Let's see, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this. BMZA will comment separately. For existing uses of the property, so this is, again, the former Cardinal Gibbons Campus that's proposed for redevelopment here. We believe that rezoning to I-1 will be compatible, so if you look both to the southwest and northeast, on the north side of I-95's corridor, there are I-1 on both sides. The other piece of the former campus to the north of it that's already been partially redeveloped, where the Babe Ruth Field is and the wide programming there, is OR-2 and commercially-zoned, and that redevelopment is mostly on the northern piece of that property, so there won't be any negative impacts there. The nearest residential-type uses are some senior living complexes across Caton Avenue to the west, kind of at the northern tip of the property, but they're kind of, again, some distance away. Or there's an R-3 zone, some 750 feet to the south across the I-95 interchange, which is far enough away that there won't be any negative impacts there. So we think that this property is perfectly suited for redevelopment for light industrial use, and will connect that I-1 zoning on either side. And again, it's right on the highway, so we think that that's a favorable location. For all those reasons, we believe that it meets the requirements for rezoning and recommend
Thank you, thank you, Eric. And I want the Committee to know, too, I just, while Eric was explaining this, I just received a call from Councilwoman Porter, and she had a family emergency, but she did tell me that she is in definite support of this bill, so I wanted to share that message with the Committee. Are there any questions at this point to Eric Tiso of the Planning? Did this, this went through the Planning Commission? Did this have to go through the Commission as well?
Yes, it did, February 25th, and they recommended favorable.
Okay, thank you so much. The Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, do we have a representative, Kate?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. There was not, the acting director of the BMZA was not able to participate this afternoon, but she did want for me to mention that they defer to the Planning Department and Commission's report in reference to this legislation.
Okay, thank you. Department of Transportation, Liam Davis?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT. DOT stands by its bill report, which is no objection. Thank you.
Thank you. Elena DePietro from the Solicitor's Office?
Madam Chair, Victor from the Law Department, yep.
Oh, hi, Victor.
So we are ready to approve the bill for Forman legal sufficiency. You heard Eric Tiso's excellent factual rendition, so if you agree with those facts, you are perfectly entitled to approve the bill for legal lawfully.
Thank you. Department of Housing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our bill report. We do not object to the passage of this bill.
Thank you, Stephanie. And the Baltimore Development Corporation, Dave Garza?
Madam Chair, and other members of the Committee, the BDC stands by its report, and we support Bill 21-0026.
Thank you. Now, we're going to check to see if there's any public testimony. And I do see Ms. Caroline Hecker. Did you want to, Caroline, did you want to go ahead and speak on this bill?
Just very briefly, thank you, Madam Chair. Caroline Hecker, for the record, Rosenberg-Martin-Greenberg, on behalf of the applicant, MRP Industrial. I just want to add a little bit of color to what Mr. Tiso said. We agree completely with the findings that he presented and with the recommendation of the Planning Commission. This is a $45 million capital investment in a logistics facility in Baltimore City. It'll create 150 to 250 construction jobs, as well as 350 to 475 permanent full- and part-time jobs once the new facility opens. We've done extensive outreach with the Violetville and Morale Park communities, and we're very excited about bringing this project to Baltimore City. Kate Bryden from MRP is on the line as well. If you have specific questions for them, I'm also happy to answer any questions that the Committee might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's also, pardon me if I pronounce a name wrong, Louis Carden, also from BDC, but I know Dave Garza already testified, but Lou, it was something in the chat, was
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm for the next one, but I was on the public list instead of the participant list. It's all corrected now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, we're checking for public testimony. Please use the raise hand function if you, to indicate if you want to testify at this time. So everyone, please be patient while we'll check, while we're checking to see about public testimony on this bill. And I see no raised hands, so, and I think there's, there's one call.
Mr. Ahmed, would you like to testify?
No, I, my name's Mary Ahmed. I'm listening, and on behalf of Councilwoman Alicia Porter, also available to answer questions. Sorry, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any, are there any further questions at this time? We're hearing the echo, so please close up or mute your phone. And there are no amendments to this bill. Is that correct? Okay. Do we have a motion to move? Oh, the...
I moved the finding of facts.
Thank you. Who moved the finding of the facts? I mean...
Dorsey and Conway, second.
Thank you. Chair Middleton, yes? Councilman Bullock? Is a yes? Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Councilman Glover is absent. Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes? The findings have been approved. And we have no amendments. Is there a motion to move the bill?
Move the bill favorable.
Second, Conway.
Councilman Dorsey, second by Conway. Councilman Dorsey, second by Conway. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Councilman Glover, absent. Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Council, Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
This bill will be moved to second reader at the next council meeting. And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, members. Have a safe evening.